But at that time, I didn't know that Bigfoots were even around. So we just continued walking and we're walking north. And then where the orange diamond is, suddenly around this wall stinking. And it was the most awful thing. It was like BO, urine, burning baby diapers, garbage, dead animal, wet horse, all of that stuff all together. And it was so pungent that once you get the smell of it, you'll never forget it. And I stopped and I looked around and I'm going, "Who's burning their garbage?" But it's private timber company land. You can park at the gateway over there with the little pluses on the upper left side. But you can't camp there. You can walk in, you can hunt, you can take your animal out if they're okay with that or work. Anyway, she didn't say anything to my girlfriend, but she smelled it too. I found out later. We just kept walking and at the end of the yellow line, you see the road crosses it to the left. And so we took the left. And where the diamond is, or a little triangle, excuse me, a little triangle, we're walking along, it's starting to get dark, it's dusk. You can see that down in the trees, it's kind of gloomy, but you can still see the trees and stuff in there. And she says, "What the blank is that?" She looked down there to our left. And I looked down there and I saw this thing, kind of doing this. And maybe it's a bear. Let's keep going. So we kept going. We went just about 200 yards further, went around the corner, just outside of that place, and it had walked up onto the road and started vocalizing. It was a beautiful, beautiful woo-hoo kind of sound, perfect pitch each time, incredibly loud. And you could probably hear for three, five miles, something like that. And we got the sense of it was just saying, "This is where I'm at, everybody." You know, whoever else was around, which we didn't know. But suddenly it all came together. Oh, my gosh, that's not deer, bear, elk, cougar, any kind of bird I've ever heard. That can only be a Bigfoot. Oh, yeah, the smell, you know, everybody knows about the smell. It's not 100%. They don't always do that. But anyway, we took off as fast as we could, got back to the vehicle, headed home. I got online as soon as I got home, and I'm looking up Bigfoot audio, and I found the BFRO website. And I found, I'm just telling the story so close to here. Well, one of the things was, I was so scared that I'm not going into woods without my Marlin 4570 loaded up with hot loads, and if I see one, I'll shoot her. Well, I don't believe that anymore. But at the time, you're working with very limited information as to what these things are. And if you just discovered that they're real, it's pretty scary. So I found the BFRO website, and I started searching around for audio that they had, and I found a match. It was a different song, but the same voice. And it was the Pualk screen, recorded by Jay Bartholomew way back in 1973. On the BFRO website, Matt Moneymaker just put a little explanation in there. He says, "It's coyotes." Well, he never talked to Jay. I did. So Jay's right, he's wrong. He's not always right, though, even though he's the boss. It was a different call, but it was the same voice and a different song. And let me see if I can get it right here. It should have been played, but you know how powerful calls go sometimes. Let me look on it here. So how many of you have heard that before? Yeah, cool.
I've heard it live.
Did you?
At my parents' house, end of that bridge.
Oh, okay.
And I stand there looking.
So that was, that was on the South Hill Pualk. You know, it's all built up now, but over there by Wildwood Park, they're still there. They come in there, everyone's in the lounge. Okay, so we're in the work. I had to tell everybody because I'm me and I'm truthful, and I know that, right? We all have, you know, this sense of integrity that we, you know, since it's me, everybody's gonna believe me, right? Well, most of my coworkers looked at me like I was nuts. I was telling them all, and the thing was, over the next few days, they'd come up one at a time, and they'd say, "Hey, can I talk to you over in this conference room?" So we'd go in and close the door. "Yeah, what happened?" "Oh, yeah, this happened to me. I was out arching hunting, and it was shaking the trees and yelling at me and all that." Well, I found out I'd had half a dozen people that had had their own experiences. So I guess that's the first part of my research, right? I'm finding out I've got coworkers and buddies that are experiencing this. And that made me hungry for more answers. So I started wondering, you know, what kind of thing are we dealing with? You know, is it a wood ape? That's kind of where a person naturally starts. You know, they've seen all the pictures of what people, you know, draw on sketch and what the TV does, and they always look like some snarling big, you know, gorilla with big fangs and drool dripping and all that. Are they cavemen? You know, do they look more human than they look ape? You know, what is it? Or is it something unique? So most people, when they have a sighting, they're gonna deal with it two ways. They're gonna get really upset and they're gonna bury it. They're just not gonna talk about it. They're afraid that their family and their coworkers will belittle them. And sometimes they do. Very often they do. But they just, they won't talk about it. Others, like me, became obsessive. It was all I would talk about, you know? At lunchtime, I'd be reading websites, you know, listening to the different stories, reading the different stories on different sites. And my favorite, one of my favorites is the Cowman Ethical Payless Crossing, which is only a little bit west of where I live. So that kind of resonated. But it was kind of a good little story on, well, how do they really act around people that they live with? You know, because a lot of people, you know, live, have a little place out in the middle of nowhere, and the Bigfoots are around, and after a while, they discover each other. Well, the Bigfoots always know you're there, but you discover that they're there. Hey, I dropped Dr. Melvin's book, Legends in Science. People would give me library books and stuff like that. You know, you got Chris Murphy, Grover France, you know, the older people, John Green. They're an older generation of researcher. A lot of them have researched their whole lives and never seen a thing. That doesn't mean what they weren't, that what they were doing wasn't valid, though they were just doing the best they could. So I was getting no answers from any of them. You find out that, you know, okay, they've got a lot of footprint castings. Okay, that's great. Something alive is leaving footprints, right? And other type of things. Some pictures, debatable how good they are, you know, whether they're real or not. But you don't know what they are, you don't know who they are. But there's this strange feeling of connection that you get when you have a sighting and you get to see one. I don't know how they do it, but I think this is the first hint of the woo. They connect with you. And, you know, I'm seeing heads nod. So I felt like, on one level, I'm scared of what they are, terrified of what they are, of seeing one. But on the other hand, I wanna see one. I wanna be close to them. And even at that time, after my first sighting and no other, no other experiences, I felt like I didn't wanna live anyplace where they weren't around, which means you could pretty much live anywhere in the United States. So I saw that the BFRO was having expeditions, the public can go. And so, you know, I thought, great, I'm gonna sign up, you know? And I did. And so the first expedition was August 2006. And I remember sending them the email, starting the process, trying to get signed up for it. And this character named Matt Moneymaker, who I had no idea who that was. And I thought, oh, a name, Moneymaker, am I getting scammed? You know, am I gonna pay my, at the time, $350 and, you know, that's it? You know, never, never have anything happen after that? But I thought, well, what the heck? I'm gonna go for it. And so I paid on paid towel, which I had never done before, so we had to walk them through that. So I get to the expedition, and it's like I'm meeting 40 brand-new friends. It was wonderful. First guy was this guy Kevin Jones. How many have met Kevin Jones before?
Oh, yeah.
A few of us, a few of that. He's retired Army Green Beret and was the commander of the security forces at Hampford for a number of years. And during that time, he had access to some really cool high-tech. And Boeing retired, that access went away. But they used it, that was before I got into this. They used that to good effect, especially the night vision. Then Matt Moneymaker showed up, and then this other guy, Paul Graves. How many know Paul Graves? Paul Graves, yeah. He showed up. And then I found out someone's gonna bring Bob Gimlin in, and it's this, it's this character who I didn't know who he was, but his name was Mel Skahan. Turned out he was somebody who was gonna be very important in my upbringing in the Sasquatch subject. Also, met this guy there, he showed up right after me. His name's John Ray. He's still in the BFRO. He organizes expeditions still. And turned out, we both worked at Boeing, so we became buddies, and we'd camp next to each other, and we were with each other everywhere we went. Good friend. First expedition, and talking about vets, we went out across the swamp with just our backpacks, threw a pad down, threw a sleeping bag down, and slept the night out there, just daring them to come see us. Those satellite camps around, one of them, everybody was out on a night walk, and they left one person there to just keep an eye on camp so people didn't come and raid it. And a Bigfoot just walks boldly right through the middle of camp, scared the crap out of him. I spent the rest of the night in his Jeep. So Matt Moneymaker made this funny comment about, "If you see the little blue lights, the Bigfoots are around." And I'm thinking, what the heck are you talking about? Little blue lights? What's that got to do with Bigfoots? So this is kind of an introduction to some woo stuff, you know? You know, what are those blue lights? Is that them? Is it something else? Fairies? I don't know what the blue lights are, but I know that if you study the little blue lights all through history, they talked about them all during the Middle Ages and everything. So it's something people are really seeing. It's not, you know, history, whatever it is. So we went for a night walk, a group of us. Dave Ellis and his wife Terry was there. I don't know how many of you know who Dave Ellis is. He does, his expertise is audio recordings, and he's really good at doing castings, too. And we're walking along, there's my friend John Ray, there's Tracy Herrick's dad. I didn't realize how important she was to the Bigfoot world. She's a primatologist, probably the bravest young lady that I know. We're walking along, and all of a sudden, off to the left side of the road, about 20 feet away, is two big almond-shaped eyes, kind of look like that in the dark. My son figured out how to make something that looks like Bigfoot eyes. Use a paper towel roll, and you cut eyeballs in it, you know, about that far apart, and then you put a glow stick in there and tape the ends closed, put a string through it. Well, out camping, see, we do a family camping trip. So out camping up at Tackalak Lake, he would sneak out and he would hang those from the trees. And when people got up to go to the bathroom down at the potties, they would run across those, and you'd hear yelling and screaming. He was really good at that stuff. But anyway, that's what it looked like, and then it blinked. And, you know, I'm going, they told us, "Don't point." So I'm going, "Tracy, he's right over there." And she goes, "Oh, really?" And she just walked right up to it. It didn't stick around when she did that, but I thought, man, that's gutsy. Put all the guys to shame for sure. So you got glowing eyes. All right, now, everybody understands to shine a flashlight at a deer, you're gonna see the eyes glow, right? No big deal, easy to understand. But if you're not shining a flashlight and they glow, now that's a big deal. Because the only things I know that do that kind of stuff is things like 3,000 feet under the water, you know? But they do it. I've seen it a number of times. I've seen white, light green, blue, let's use the little ones, I think, orange and red. Why the different colors? I don't know what it means. Maybe it's their emotional state? I don't know. Maybe it's differences between individuals. But they glow. So that's kind of a paranormal type of thing, and there's a lot of arguments over that. I remember, you know, back then, the BFRO had an investigator's group on Yabu, and investigators could chat back and forth on this group. And when this kind of subject would come up, it would start a big fight, every time. There was a guy, PhD guy named Henner Farinbok, and he swore up and down that would have to be impossible, that they could not do that. But they did. It blinked, I saw it. Also, as we're walking along, Kevin Jones is talking about zapping. And turned out, he's been zapped 20-some times. One hard enough to injure him. And he was explaining what it is. He says, "Well, they got, you know, a underwater, you know, you'll feel a tingling, you know, or you feel a weird vibe, and you'll feel like, I gotta get out of here. Maybe you're, it'll amplify your emotional state a little bit if you're scared. You're gonna get a lot more scared. Or they can hit you with, you know, a underwater, and that'll make you sick to your stomach, make you maybe want to throw up. Or they can do a mega-water, and that will really injure you if they want to. They could hit the whole group, or they could pick up one person in the group and hit that one person." So one time, they were out on a night walk, there was a Bigfoot in front of them, they had the fancy nods, is what they call them now, night vision goggles, the really good military ones. And they see the Sasquatch 50 yards in front of them, standing in the road, and they're all getting, they're all getting the infrasound, just enough to say, "Stay back." And Kevin goes, "Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk up on it." And he made it like step, step, and dropped him. And he was just flat on the ground, and they had to grab him, pull him back with them in order for it to let, kind of let go of what was going on there. So they can really hurt you with it. Good thing that they don't. Usually, they just warn you away with it. So you got Sasquatches, little blue lights, glowing eyes, and they can disable you without even touching you. So that was a wonderful night. I really had a good, good time on that. So the next day, Mel Skahan brings Bob Gimlin into camp. And I didn't know who Mel was, Pat Sabel. Most of you have probably seen him on the Bigfoot shows, being interviewed. Yakama Nation tribal member and professional forester. So he spends all his time out on their reservation, timber cruising and all that. He knows probably almost more than anybody I've ever met, except for Tom. But, you know, everybody, everybody came around, and they wanted to talk about, Bob told us the whole Patty episode, details in that account that you can hear from him personally that you'll never read anywhere. Lot more context to the whole story. Amazing how close she was, you know? In the video, you look and you think, oh, she's 50 yards away. No, she was here to the door. She was that close. It's just the way, you know, the camera looks, makes it look. Anyway, it was pretty cool. Then some people came, oh, we gotta get a picture with Bob, great souvenir. So then some people came up and they said, "We were out on the swamp, and we found some tracks, and we want, we want you to tell us what they are," to Mel. And so Mel goes out, and Bob Keane creeps along with us, who's in pretty good shape in those days, go on night walks and all that stuff with us. And so we found the tracks, and, you know, Mel said, "Well, it's just a bear." And he knows, if anybody else. But we kept looking around, and we found a human footprint out in the mud. Well, that was cool. It was human-sized, but out where it was, humans aren't gonna be running around barefoot. So probably one of them. Bob's tired, he goes back to camp with some of the others, and then just Mel and I continued on out into the wilderness by ourselves, spent the whole afternoon. And he gave me the rundown of the tribal evil. He talked about the story of the big people, the medium people, and the little people. And I'd never heard about the little people. You know, little, little people, then they're mischievous, and if you don't leave them a gift when you camp, they're gonna take your stuff. So he also showed me about tree breaks, and he showed, "Well, here's a tree break. Now, look that way. Oh, there's another one. And now, look beyond it, there's another one." He was showing how they marked their trails with it. He was also showing me how they will mark artifacts. One thing that we found was a cattle guard. Now, we're a mile back, and it's across a swamp, more than a mile from the nearest road. What carries a 500-pound cattle guard that far in and drops it? Something's real strong. But all around it, the trees were twisted off and broke down to show, to mark that there was something there that was some kind of human artifact. And then we found a very nice footprint. It was like 17 inches long, about six and a half inches wide. We found these little star patterned woven stick glyphs, is what we call them now. Found a bunch of those out there. So it's pretty clear to me, we're not dealing with a wood ape. We're dealing with something that knows what art is, knows how to make a trail and make direction, finding artifacts out there, a tree twist, that kind of thing. So on my very first expedition, I'm getting introduced to what we now call the woo. So we got little blue lights, glowing eyes, zapping. So I really got off to a good start on my first expedition. So other things that people would talk about, see, that was August. End of September, early October, they were asking me to be an investigator. I said, "Sure," I didn't know what I was getting into. So they set me up, and I started investigating things, and still going out on more trips with people. And people are telling me about orbs, and I'm going, mm-hmm, orbs, portals, that was a stretch. Little LED lights floating around. They look like LED lights. Little pinpoint, right? Little lights floating around out there. Mindspeak, telepathy, other odd things out there in the dark? Turns out, there's more odd things out there in the dark than just Bigfoots. Don't know what they are, 'cause you can't see them, but, well, one thing is, who's seen the flying rod? Pictures of the flying rod? Okay, it's a, you get them in the trail cameras. Some people say, "Well, that's just an insect flying by." The insects look different that are really insects. So what it is, is a long hot dog-looking thing with this frills along the side, and it zips around, flies around. You could see it in the trail camera, but you can't see it with your eyes. They're kind of, you know, I would use, I learned that you're gonna learn a lot of new things that you don't understand. You're gonna learn about stuff. And so just politely smile and remember it, file it away, keep it as a data point. If you don't understand it today, somewhere down the road, it's probably gonna get explained to you. And that's worked for me. There are books out there that start, that talk about the paranormal aspects of Bigfoot. First one is The Locals by Tom Powell. For a person who's just getting into this subject, and they wanna get a good overview of the whole thing, you know, the whole Bigfoot subject, get that book. But he will talk about some of the paranormal-type stuff in there. Valley of the Stukum by Sally Shepherd Walford. This is Autumn Williams' mother. And this is from when they had a little cabin out here on the Carbon River, I guess. On the Carbon River, they had a Bigfoot sighting the day they got there, and it just continued the whole time they lived there. And they experienced a bunch of the weird woo stuff. Shady Neighbors by Tom Powell. It's a, it's a novel, it's a fiction book, but it's written around kind of a real story. And when you read it, if you know the people, you know, that's this person, and that's this person, so you can figure it out. But it's a fun story, and it's a, it's a good, it's a really good explanation of some of the weird stuff that they do. It's fun. I highly recommend it. Edges of Science, another one by Tom Powell, where he takes the Bigfoot phenomenon and he starts to interweave it with, well, what's going on with them and the ETs and UFOs and UAPs and quantum physics and all that kind of stuff. Good book. And Quanti Lassarites. When I was reading this book, I got about halfway through it, and I threw it down, and I never did finish it. It was a little too far out there for me, but that's not to say it's not right. But at that time, I wasn't ready for that stuff. Especially when he drove his car off a cliff, and the UFO picked his car up and put it back on the road. That's where I stopped. So woo from other expeditions, we'll go through some of these. 2007, we were investigating an area in the Wainuchi Valley called Weedkin Creek. Some people, other people know about it. It's warehouser land. At that time, you were welcome to park at the gate, walk around the end of the gate, take your gear in, you could camp. There's even some places where you could drive in around the backside, get in there. You could camp out. They didn't care. They started caring when people started dump, dumping their trash, and now it's all gated off. You gotta have a permit from them to go in there, so it's now off-limits to us. But we were out on a night walk in there, and I got zapped. It felt like somebody hit me with a cattle prod in the back. Shocking, yes, but it didn't hurt us or hurt me, so they led us off easy on that. BFRO Olympics Expedition 2008, had a bunch of stuff going on with that. This is up in North Olympics, actually closer to the Straits of Wanafugue, maybe a half-mile as a crow flies from the water. Learned about orbs. One of the gals there, Julia, she took a picture of an orb, and that's a crop and blow-up of it peeking around behind a tree. Now, some people have said, "Oh, orbs are just lens flares." Well, not at night. And this is in a shady spot facing north. There's no way her lens was any, pointed anywhere near the sun. So that's a real deal, and that was pretty fun to get that. One night, I led a group out, 11 people and myself, and we walked out the end of the road. Some people have heard this story, it's one of my favorites. Walked out the end of the road, and there was a turnaround there, and we stopped, and everybody just sat down in little groups, and we're just gonna wait there. It was getting dark, it was kind of, you could still see in the northwest was, was blue. You could see pretty well when your night vision was fully formed. So we're sitting there, we're waiting, and within about 10 minutes, one comes walking down the ridge towards us. And he wasn't trying to be quiet, he wasn't trying to be stealthy, he was tromp, 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 tromp. And then he stopped at the, there was a cut bank, and at the top of the cut bank, about 30 feet up, was a big tangled maple tree. And it stopped right there, and it's looking at us, and we're looking at its glowing eyes, and it's going really cool. My friend Rain, she gets out some trail mix, and she tries to climb up there to get a trail mix, but she couldn't climb up there, so she just left it there. So, yeah, oh, this is cool. And then another one comes, and it's coming in from our left, and tromp, 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 tromp. And tromp, 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 tromp. So I go from little group to little group. I'm, "Yeah, okay, y'all all right? You know what's going on? You know, we got two Bigfoots here. We're just gonna see what happens." And I get all the way down to the end and Julie and her friend John are sitting down there. And they said, "There's one right behind us." So now we got three. So to me, that says, "They're smart. They had a plan and they executed on that plan." So I, you know, go back and I'm gonna go sit down where I was at the other end of the group. And well, there was this mom. She and her husband came from Utah and they brought their three little kids. And their kids are like 11, 7, and like 5. And she has them with her. And she says, "My kids are frightened. Can you take us home now?" And I'm like, "We came here to interact with Bigfoots and here they are and you wanna leave?" So I says, "Okay, well, I understand. They're afraid. I'm not gonna make them do something they don't wanna do. So quick plan. Whoever wants to go with me, her and the kids can go. The rest are gonna..." The plan is you're gonna stay back and you're gonna watch what they do when I leave with the kids. "Okay, everybody's cool with that plan." I start walking out. Rain's son, AJ, he decided he would go along with me. He was about 14, good kid. And we're walking along and I'm in the, it's a two, little two-track logging road. I'm in the left side. The middle's all grown up with brass, so everybody else is kinda on the other side. And we're walking along and he sees one belly crawl across the road in front of us. And he kept saying something about it, that I was paying attention to these kids and all that. And I didn't hear him. And so we kept walking. And when I got up, like, "If this is it, I walk right up here." And then it got up out of the grass. And it was so huge. It was like a big cow getting up. So startling, I had my wood knocking stick, which I don't use anymore. But anyway, I wheeled around like, "Ah, I'm gonna get ya." And everybody else starts screaming. And it sounded like somebody had been murdered. So the radios all pop on, you know, "Who got hurt? Who's been killed? What's going on?" And, you know, people from back there come running up, you know, "Is everything all right?" And kinda got everything settled down. When it got up, it just, phew, off the side of the hill and down and away from us. But they were having a good time with us. And, you know, retrospect, that was really cool. Lot of fun. Oh, so then we keep walking. Somebody else drove a vehicle in as far as they could and they were gonna wait for us there. And the other group, after about 10 or 15 minutes, they kinda lost their nerve. And so they decided they were gonna walk out. Well, it was like two gals and three or four guys. And they're walking along and the guys are getting further and further. You know, here's the gals and they're getting further away, you know. And the guys are stopping to wait and the gals catch up and continue like that. Well, what the guys didn't realize is the gals were doing that on purpose. They wanted to isolate themselves from the guys to see what would come near them. And so they're messing around with this little Olympus audio recorder, one that, you know, they were handing out 'cause they were cheap, you know, and trying to figure out how to get it on. And Beth says, "Do you hear that walking up behind me?" Julia's right in front of her. Julia looks you around and says, "He's five feet away from you." And so Beth says, "Okay." And they just kept walking. Well, we, they'd radioed ahead that there was one following them. And so this other guy, he had a, at that time, you had to make do with what you had. So he had a commercial night vision scope and he had a video camera. And he made a bracket that would put one in front of the other. And he would use that. It worked pretty well. So he comes out there and he gets in the bushes and he's gonna wait. And he's gonna get that thing as it's following the girls. And they come up to within about 100 yards of where he was hiding and the Bigfoot split off. There was two of them that were following people and they split off. So somehow they detected that somebody was up there. And that was, that was fun. So we're definitely not dealing with a wig. Other things, little pinpoints of light. Another expedition up at Bumping Lake, I was sent out to a satellite camp, which I didn't wanna do, but I did it. And my job at that point, there was a few other people camping around me. And it was at a gate at the road. 'Cause the road had suffered some really bad weather damage and so the Forest Service had gated it off. It's now open if you go up there. So what people would do is they would drive up there or they'd bring groups of people up there, drop them off. And they would hike in and do a night walk two, three miles back and come back. And they had a lot of fun doing it. But my job was to then take them halfway back to main base camp. And somebody from main base camp would grab them and take them the rest of the way. And I'd walk back by myself in the dark, which I loved it. I can't get enough of that. If you've never done that, it's amazing. Other people were talking about seeing little pinpoints of light floating around. I saw two on that particular time. One was across the river on the far side. And I'm out there and I'm looking at this little light. It's like somebody has a little flashlight that they're using to walk through the woods. I thought, "Well, maybe there's somebody on the road over there or something." Found out next day, there's no road. There was no trail. It was just a light. Another one I saw was up the top of the tree. And so I'm seeing this really bright light at the top of the tree. And I'm kinda looking around and I'm doing this kind of thing. Am I looking at something in the tree or am I looking at stars on a tree? No, it was in the tree. Don't know what it was. Let's see. Sasquatches walked in front of people on that trip. That was fun. Then we had another trip. This is where I got, no, we had another, this trip, Bob Gimlin came. Kevin Jones brought him. Some friends of mine from work came, a gal and her daughter. They were interested in Bigfoots. The daughter was about 15, very athletic. She was into taekwondo and so she had her stick and she'd be out there doing her, you know, Taekwondo stuff. Evidently, the Sasquatches were watching that and thought that was pretty interesting. But we had gone out all day long, walking around. Bob Gimlin was with us, you know, exploring, looking for stick structures and stuff like that. And we came back, I don't know, it was like 5 o'clock. A little later, Kevin Jones, he decides he's gonna go out by himself. And so it was dark by then. He takes off. He goes out by himself. He said, "Within 50 yards, one that had been watching our camp picked him up and accompanied him. And it would stay off to the side. And he'd walk down the road and he took this other road we call Spooky Road. And it goes down to a swamp. And where they are in the picture, that's the end of the road." So what he did is he went and he laid down right where he's laying down and he just waited. And he made sure he had the root poking him in the back so he wouldn't fall asleep. Took 15 minutes, but that Sasquatch approached him and sat down on the other side of that log. And he's laying there going, "Hmm, this is interesting." And then suddenly he got this, it was like a slideshow in his head of his life. And it was event, 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 event. And it was like it was probing his head, probing his mind, looking at his life and, I don't know, getting to know him? I don't know what. But at one point, he thought, "Well, I better look to see what time it is." And he pulls up his watch and it goes, "Huh." And then he put his watch back, his arms back down and it goes, "Huh." And then it started up again. And when he felt like it's through, it's done, he just got up, didn't look at it, just turned and walked away. So that's one of the first experiences that I knew of, of that kind of mind probing kind of thing. I've since heard many other people have it. And then I experienced it, which I'll show you here in a little bit. This one I call, "He Got Me." Up at Bumping, that was my little camp. Middle of the night, it was, this was like October. So it was cold. It was still dry, but it was really cold. Anyway, I get up in the middle of the night and, you know, have to take a leak. So I did that. Super quiet. Dead quiet. You know, "There's something here. There's gotta be something here. This is just too quiet." So I went back into my tent and I laid down on my air mattress in my sleeping bag. And I'm laying there with my eyes wide open. And I'm going, "I'm just gonna wait here and see what happens." And then pretty soon, it was like I had no control. My consciousness went, "Phew," and I was out. And I remember just before I went out thinking, "He got me." Because they can put you out like that. And so nothing they can do is pin you. They can pin you down without touching you. So you can't move. You're wide awake. You're aware of everything going on around you, but you can't move. So anyway, wake up next morning, best night's sleep in a long time. And I go out to another guy here. His tent was not too far away. And I says, "Hey, Rick, anything happen last night?" He says, "Yeah." He says, "Something snuck up to my tent and ran its hand right down the side of my tent." And so we started looking around and you could find out where, you could find, looked like a big snake. Like if you're playing a 33 record on 45, you know, like the chipmunks, really, really bad, and I didn't even touch it. And it took off and I got about a half mile away and quit doing it. So that was really weird. They, you know, they messing around with their electronic devices. A lot of, and it was, it was working fine. And down a slope from us on a trail, one of the other guys using his thermal spotted a Bigfoot walking along. And so he's getting a hold of me. You know, he's hollering in the dark. I can see him waving. I go down there. I get my thermal up. I see it myself. And by that, this time, it's down on the ground and I'm doing a freaking spider. And I go, "I gotta report this." I push the report button and nothing would happen. And I kept working. I couldn't get it to work. So the next morning, I get up, turn the thing on, it worked fine. That's that moment. It didn't work. I don't know. So the mental here, like, fine. Let's see, we had another expedition. Oh, yeah, this was cool. This was, this was my mental slideshow. Two gals and they were, they were VFR Olympians. And we were looking for a place to have an expedition south of Mount Hanger. Anyway, we found, we found a good place. And then we went over to Ashford where we had a witness there, really great guy. He had them all around his house all the time. They were, he would, you know, catch them hunting. Their little kids would mess with his building materials and leave them all scattered all over. Just tons of really good stories. So we asked, you know, "Can we spend the night here so we don't have to go all the way back, you know, in the dark?" "Yeah, sure." So we threw up a tent and I threw out my air mattress and the others threw out what they had to sleep on. And in the middle of the night, my air mattress is starting to lose air. Pretty soon, I got a rock in my back and I'm awake. And when I woke, it was like, "Oh, they're standing right outside my tent." Somehow you just know. So I thought, "Oh, this is cool." And I dropped the gal next to me and I said, "Hey, they're right there here." She goes, "Huh." I just think. So I laid there and pretty soon, I'm, "Let me get by this real quick. Come on." Oh. Oh, here it is, here it is. This is where I'm at. I saw that or something similar. And then it faded away and another one. And then it faded away and another one. And it faded away and another one. It was like six individuals running after the other. And I, I think they were just introducing themselves and they were trying to gauge, "What's my reaction to how they look?" And I was like, "Oh, that's cool. That's neat." So I had my own mental slideshow experience. So we got eye glow, zapping, blue light, twilight, orbs, mind speak, electronic devices, portals, slideshows, and there's more. This really freaks people out. So first time I heard about it was in Tom Powell's book, The Locals. He talked about some hunters who watched one walking down a clear cut. And when it realized the hunters were there, it walked away and just disappeared like going into a Star Trek transporter. Again, I took the wait and see. A few years later, I was walking with Rain and her son AJ, coming down a trail over by Eatonville. It's now the Nashville State Park. And then it was nothing. And we're walking down the trail and this great big, I mean, big, as tall as like up to those shutter-looking things, walks across the trail in front of us all shimmering. And then when it walked across, I could see the trees moving. And then it stopped maybe 50 yards away and it whistled. So Rain, she whistled back. She's good at it. I can't whistle for beans. They went back and forth about four times. And then it got bored with us and we heard it just walk away. So I'd seen something like that. So that's good. And then, everybody knows Barb Chu. Looking around here, you better know Barb Chu. She lives over in, up in, or Greenwater. Had a little cabin there, has her spot. It's really cool. Takes groups out several times, five, six, what, five, six times a summer. She's really cool with how she does her expeditions. There's a lot more females than there's guys there. So it has a different vibe to it. And it's magic. And it's really cool. If you haven't ever gone with her, look her up on Facebook, find the page and see if you can go. She will do it. Anyway, she was leading some people on a daytime walk, you know, looking for stick structures and this and stuff. And she got this video, which she's allowed me to have and use, but don't give it to anybody. And why, have you probably seen this?
You know. Yeah. Like a drought and not a hang, you know? Yeah. Something hard and fast. I have to do that. Did you see that? Yeah.
Okay, so she didn't actually see it drop, but she happened to get it in her camera. What she saw was it uncloaked, taking off. So I got to see this the day after she got it. I got to see the raw footage of it. So, and if you know Barb, she's not a techie person. So she wouldn't be able to manufacture something like this. So to me, you know, that, that was the proof for me. That cloaking's a deal, you know? It's real. Let's see. Oh, yeah, another one. Doing a night walk. We parked. You see the little loop there? We parked at the bottom end of it. And a bunch of us coming to do a night walk. It was like four gals and two guys, two vehicles. Over to the right is creek. When we parked, they started vocalizing in the creek, down the creek. And I thought, "This is good." So we walked the road up to where it works and it comes back and makes a loop. And it's actually going up the hill in the bottom picture. You can see it going up the hill. Totally dark, moon at night, stars out, pretty clouds. You could see everything. Good night vision. You could see everything. And so me and the other guy, we're both hunters. And so we were way ahead of the girls by then. And we're up on, nearly on top of the peak there. And all of a sudden, they start screaming bloody murder. And we heard this, "Boom, boom, 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 boom." As something comes running up at them and by them. And they didn't know what it was gonna do when it got to them, but it just ran by them. They were really freaked out. And we're standing up and looking down there. We can see the girls. And we couldn't see what ran by them. And we should have now, we'll see it. I couldn't see it. I could sure hear it. They could hear it, you know? It had to been cloaked. And I went looking for tracks. Couldn't find any, but I don't know if the deal was with that. I've also tried to see them in my thermal when they're cloaked. They don't show up. So it's kinda weird. They do healing. Some people, they experience that. Tom's experienced that.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, what's the trouble with the woo? Okay, woo started out was back in 2013, early 2014. A lot of us were having experiences with it. We were talking about it. Well, heaven forbid we talked about it. And so other people in the Washington D F R O decided they're gonna squash that. And they started writing nasty letters to people, emails to people, complaining that Matt Moneymaker, uh, all this stuff caused a lot of hate and discontent and absolutely blew up the Washington movie. Blew it to bits. Nobody knew who they could trust, so everybody quit talking. And that went on for years. Uh, so the idea that Bigfoots are not just a wood ape or a caveman is too much for some people. And they couldn't tolerate that we were talking about this paranormal woo-woo stuff. So like I said, they tried to shut us up. Um, you know, it was like cartoon. Although you make some good points, I'm gonna burn you at the stake anyway. Um, so, you know, so we got eye glow, zapping, blue lights, little white lights, orbs, portals, no slideshows, uh, mind speak. Um, well, I didn't do the portal story, but if you've studied any of, uh, any of Matt Johnson's stuff, he's at his, one of his research sites, they actually had a portal open up. And then later he figured out how to make it open up and could do it when he wanted it to. So, um, being able to pass through the fabric of a tent, little blue lights go through the tent. I've heard people who experienced a hand coming through the fabric of the tent without leaving a hole in the tent and grabbing the back of their head and cupping the top of their head and then doing a kind of a mental telepathy kind of a thing with them. Um, number of people that I've known personally who've experienced that. The cloaking, healing. So, you know, I learned this stuff just by doing it and running into it. You know, I wasn't relying on somebody else to tell me and hopefully I would believe them. So that's my presentation for today. The, you know, book, The Woo is a part of it.
Okay, folks, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to get started again. I'd like to introduce my friend Tom. And Tom's been Bigfoot for sixty-seven years. Started out with his first sighting in Olympic, the Minas Blevins. He, uh, hangs out with a group I like to camp with and Barb Chu from that there. Um, and he's a prolific writer. If you haven't seen his books, you can check them out after the presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Tantral.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Being heard and not hearing, not one of my problems. Uh, most people hear me pretty well. Uh, I am a little bit, uh, disappalled having business lately down the wall. And I want to warn you because I didn't know until last night that I was gonna be doing this presentation. Our other speaker called in very ill. And I told him to take care of himself. We would thank you. So you guys get the outfalls from that. Okay. So what did I do? I went out and I got something that I know something about startup. It's called the Patterson Givens film. And it's the testimony of experts. Because if you wanna fight, oh, get going, if you have three people that follow Sasquatch, just mention the Patterson Givens film and you'll have dual on one side, one on the other side. Okay? But I guarantee you the one on the other side is never listened to the experts. He's listened to his brother-in-law. And his brother-in-law, mine, is an idiot. He's not worth listening to. I wanna take, take a good look at this picture out here. The Bigfoot in the drawing, that's the lower right, lower left, one on one side. That's my teacher. I met him the first time on the twenty-fifth of September, twenty-ten, in the Blue Mountains outside of Wall Wall. I had gone out with a date. My friend Arl, got ahold of me from Oklahoma. She says, "This place you're growing, this road you're growing on, is there a pile of trees stacked on?" I was, uh, being truthful, I don't know. I've never been on this road. It's been closed. I've been on the road on top of the ridge on this side, the top of the ridge on this side. But this one goes up the river on the bottom. And it was, uh, oil and gas game, timberland. They shut the tree farm down and ceded this to the tribe of Humantilla. And they just finished, oh, you know, maintaining the road to where you could hit in on it mostly. And opened it up for excursion. And since I've never been in there, my first time in there, I found a long ago. She said, "Well, I see it. It's stacked of trees. And there's a big Sasquatch male with a red stripe on his chest from here to here. And he's looking for you." I says, "Okay. What I'll do is I will drive up that road till I find a pile of trees. And then I'll make my date camp there." And I did. I found a pile of trees. Nice, big, flat area there. I opened my trunk on my nineteen-seventy-eight Buick Bronco. And it took about an hour long to go mostly. And took out my camp here, set it up with my folding chair. My ice chest full of fried chicken hips, boiled eggs, diet heavy. You see, habits don't change much. Uh, and that's right, Seth. I hung my little, my feathers. Not being native, I couldn't have bald eagle feathers. So I had fake bald eagle feathers. One came from a fake eagle up on Prince of Wales Island. Another one from a fake eagle up on the Schaggy River. They were gifts from, from people who did have the right to drink them up. And if they're gifts from somebody who has the right, then I have the right to have it, right? So that's what I did. I hung them up in my little altar there and proceeded to read. Opened up my Kindle, sat back. During the afternoon during that day, four people came by me. Four people. Two o'clock in the afternoon, a voice comes in my mind, first time I've ever had that after. Says, "I can't come out. There've been too many people." I said, "Oh, okay." I said, "Do you want me to leave and come back another day?" I mean, I was retired. I didn't have to come on Saturday. I mean, there are two weeks as well. It would be my, my week was six Saturdays and a Sunday. You know? He says, "That would probably be better." And so I packed everything out of the car. I had my right foot in the car getting in. I was starting to sit down and he stood up right across the road from me. Twelve feet away. Nine foot three inches tall. Red straight, cross his chest. He's a crescent moon and a star tattooed on his shoulder. Three lines tattooed across his nose. He's, I wanted to see him before he left. I wanted to know that I was real. I said, "I know. I could tell." And the reason I knew was right, he was standing under a little hawthorn tree there. I gave him a bad yell. What else can I name a hawthorn? That would be a bad yell. And, uh, when he left, I made sure to hide it. I said, "So I knew he was back at nine foot three inches tall." And he says, "I'm your teacher. I will be back in touch with you." And he was three days later. "Can you come back out?" He doesn't come back out. "When you walk tomorrow, ten a.m.?" "All right." And I did it. And I got to knowing. And I still speak with him almost daily to today. That's a drawing a friend of mine did, a friend in Indiana. The little green picture, you can see the face peeking out with brush. That's the only picture he's ever allowed me to take of him. And he photographed me to get that. He got the biggest kick out of that. He's got the greatest sense of humor in the world. But he's in, he's loaded. But if you look at it, you can tell it was the same person. You get close enough and see it. You can see it's the same person. They got the same shape and the face. Okay. One of my favorite people in the world. I think everybody here knows who she is. I've seen her three times in my life. Last time was straight directly in front of my car, we're down the road, mile post fourteen to go. We were going into Alcatraz. As she left the road, she was with another. She says, "This is my son. Know him. I'm the one you know as Patterson." Today I want to talk about scientific proof. Not gossip. Not rumor, but proof. Testimony of experts. Testimony that can spend somebody with a chair to be gassed. What did the people of the costume industry have to say about that film? On the twentieth of October nineteen-sixty-seven, Duke Calvert wrote out, "The run out of obscurity and into destiny when they happen on a strange being and recorded one minute of film that has become probably the most controversial film ever recorded." And a controversy that need not have been had people just listened to the experts speak and not to the idiots. Why did they say it's false? Because it undermined their religion. It undermined their theory. So it can't be. So Alvin Rogers took that film to the university. Several of them. The response was Sasquatch is a myth, therefore any film should reporting to, purporting to show Sasquatch has to be a myth as well. There's open-minded thought for you, isn't it? And that's the university though. The film has been argued, advenated, ad nauseam. To no end. But we will in the next few minutes present a case that I think you will find proves its authenticity. And interestingly enough, proof of the being Sasquatch itself. Dr. Andrew Nelson, look. Doctor, not my brother-in-law. Dr. Andrew Nelson said in the Center for Motion Analysis Biometrics stated, "There are aspects that cannot be created in a suit. After analyzing the biomechanical issues, I find it is very hard to believe that someone in nineteen-sixty-seven could have fabricated the intricacies as evidenced in the soft tissue irregularities in the leg. The science at that time was just far too primitive." John Chambers, not a doctor, but he had won the Academy Award for Planet Creations in nineteen-sixty-eight. He notes a bit about making costumes, I would say. The costume he made for his movie took four hours to apply every day. He said that this suit is the finest ever devised because it was beyond mermaid's abilities in the nineteen-sixties. Every hair would have had it been placed on it individually in order for it to do what it does in this film. Dr. Jeff Melvin, no brother-in-law there. Good friend of mine. We disagree, we speak together. We disagree with sixty percent of what one another says. Shake hands and go home friends. I told him that one day. He says, "Yes, I know. He's, I'm listening to you, but you're so darn articulate. I find my head going up and down when I'm disagreeing with you." I tell him, "Listen to your head, Jeff. Listen to your head." He has, uh, he said, "Number one, one thing you should know. Your height is six point five times the length of your foot. That's an anatomical constant for, for primates. All primates' height is six point five times the length of their foot." Okay. Jeff said the size of the tracks being in the film is measured by four independent witnesses. John Green, newspaperman from Canada. Bob Timples, a, uh, oh, guy that makes, um, tire cars. From, uh, Redding, California. Al Houston, business owner in Warburg, California. And Rene de Henn, little Swiss guy that worked the, uh, shooting range in Vancouver. Quite a character. Never had the chance to be fucked, Rene de Henn, you missed out. He was a character. They made the tracks and they all said those tracks are fourteen point five inches long. If we use that ratio from Dr. Melvin's theory, the height is seven foot, ten inches. That's taller than me. I'm only six-four. Or I was when I could stand up. I'm four-four now. Bill Muntz ran the school in Hollywood for costume and design. Designed the creature from the Lagoon. That was one of his. Again, somebody that knows something about making costumes, not your brother-in-law. But he took the lens data and the distance and figured out from that it had, the subject had to be between seven and a half and eight foot tall. Not six foot tall like that's good for TV shows trying to say. Ruben Standor, senior animator, Vision Rounds Incorporated. Using inert hidden matrix system and motion analysis, created a three-D model of the creature, which he then forwarded to Dr. Andrew Nelson from Center for Motion Dynamics, who created a skeleton of the model. Dr. Nelson determined graphically that the creature walks with what we call a compliant gait. What that means is we walk with a heavy stride of gait. We pull over our knee and land heavily on our heel. So we leave a deep heel imprint, then come down on our foot and then up in our next step. They don't. Their foot comes out, around, and sits directly down in front of the fallen foot. It sits flat on the ground to start there. Then, as it starts forward, they have a mid-tarsal break in their Then, as it starts forward, they have a mid-tarsal break in their foot. Most, most, uh, vertical animals have it. We do not. But that breaks. Now all the weights on the front half of the foot alone. So if you want to determine the height and weight of a Sasquatch, you have to measure the back half of the track. For us to measure the front half, that's when we're all, all the weight's on the ground. Okay. Just exactly the opposite. Then, as they come forward, that mid-tarsal break breaks, all the weight's on their front, and you go on into the next step. So their step is this. Okay, that's a compliant gait. And one of the biggest problems created by people that want to create a fake track that fool you, is they make something fifteen inches long, put it on their foot, the first thing they find is they don't leave any tracks. If you put that fourteen and a half inch foot on my foot, that would drop my ground pressure from seven pounds per square inch to less than three. Okay, so there's no way. Nothing to make it, that's what snowshoes do. That's why you wear them. Okay? That's their purpose. To lower your, your ground pressure. They do it because that's natural. Dr. Scott Lynn. Ooh, doctor again. Also one Emmy award-winning animator. And Joe Russo attempted to train an athlete to walk with that compliant gait and were They could not train somebody to walk with that gait. These professional men concluded that it was impossible for a human to exactly duplicate the walking motion exhibited by the creature in this film. Peter Brook. Not a doctor. But the head of the Jim Henson Creature Shop. Think he might know something about Donald Gibson. John Chambers, again. A work winner for Planet of the Apes, whose effort took four professional designers three months to create. Performed an analysis of the creature in the film. They concluded that there were three notable features in the film. Arm length. Musculature beneath the skin. And hair that adheres to the body. Peter Brook stated such costumes did not exist in the nineteen sixties. The fur and hair conform to the contour of the body. Today, we make such costumes from four-way stretch fur patterns. But that did not exist until the nineteen eighties. The era of that film did not have such patterns. Is it getting a little more difficult to build a suit in nineteen sixty-seven when these factors are off? In summation, John Chambers said the suit did not stretch. I don't know how they could have done that in nineteen sixty-seven. Several individual muscle groups are plainly visible in the creature in the film, and the tightening and sliding of the Achilles tendon is evident. And that's true. Watch the film, you can see that tendon stretching up. You can see the shoulder muscles rolling. You can see the arms, the musculature, the legs moving. How do you do that in a suit? Oh, also the back. You'll see a picture of her back. Bill Muntz said, "You come off of her where the knees and elbows bend. And this is the most important part. Our knees are where they are in relation to our ass. Our elbows are where they are in relation to our arms. That cannot be altered." She has a long upper leg and a short lower leg. And due to the structure of the creature, if you could find a suit to match all the criteria, you could not find a person you could fit it to work. Analysis of the musculature of a creature by Dr. Andrew Nelson and John Chambers led them to conclude that the creature in the film is not a fake or a hoax. Analysis of the size of the compliant gait of the being in the film by Dr. Jeff Melvin, Scott Lynn, Bill Muntz, Ruben Steinberg, and Joe Russo lead them to state that the height of the being in the film is between seven and eight feet tall, and that it walks with a gait that cannot be duplicated even by an athlete. Analysis of the costume itself by Peter Brook, John Chambers, and Bill Muntz, all very well-known in the costume world, are all award winners for their work, conclude that the material needed to produce an effective costume of this type to be necessary for that film did not exist in the nineteen sixties. And even if they had been, no human could be able to physically fit it and perform it. It is very important here to note that if only one of these four conclusions is true, the film cannot be a hoax. It has to be real. The fact that are all horrors true only increases the strength of the truth of the hypothesis and that this is indeed a film of Sasquatch. Seven logical questions. But you're gonna have to wait.
Breaking on the reality.
Bob and Roger lived in Jagamo. The film was shot in Northern California. Over six hundred miles from their house to the place it's filmed. They've got the Cascades in the background, in their backyard, Blue Mountains in their front yard. You know Murphy's Law? It applies here too. The further you are from home, the higher the odds you've forgotten something, etc. Corollary to Murphy's Law? The further you are from home, the higher the odds you've forgotten will not be available If they had gone in the Cascades, found some non-descript logging road, drove the film, landed on it, stepped out, made the film, who would have ever known the difference in their lives? Why would you drive six hundred miles, spend twenty days driving your own salt all night, riding your horses all day? Sleeping three, four hours a night back home? To shoot a minute's worth of film? Anybody got an answer to that? Camping in London, the camp you're at. Called Law, Law Tree. Okay? The camp's still there. Actually, that was a place where, if you remember the Jerry Crewitz, when Jerry was the capital when they're building, the Cascades, when they're building those roads. And that's where they stacked their, their equipment, their culvert and all of that. Captain Buell was in Law Skin, House Creek Camp. They had to tend to their own stock and keep life running. Bob said they never went to town until after this incident. And I talked to Bob, a great man, about this. And he's still in Chicago today, and ninety-three years old, as he was then, thirty-two years old. Thirty-four years old. I had the opportunity to spend time with him in October. Just past ninety-third birthday. And he's still going strong. They shot that film when she showed up. Roger grabbed his camera, jumped down off his horse, who was by that time upside down. Headed for the creek, fell down, got up. He had twenty-four feet of film left in the camera. He shot seventy-six feet of it on the scenery around. If you're gonna film a hoax, why would you use only the last twenty-four feet on a roll of film? Wouldn't you kind of want to start with a fairly new roll of film? Wouldn't that just make sense? But then maybe my brother-in-law got one. It does make the sites, location of the site, their future. Even today, it's identifiable to a film. But it doesn't do a thing for making that film invalid. If you were gonna film a hoax, why would you go three and a half miles up a creek bed from the nearest road to do it? That's where they got the film. It was three and a half miles of them. Remember Murphy's Law? It compounds exponentially when you're remote from a remote spot. Why would you film next to a noisy creek? How would you communicate with your actor? The banks are tricky, right? Fell down. He didn't know whether he had a thing on this film. He filmed on the creek when it crossed. All communication must be by hand signal. And it's necessary to navigate a crosswalk around. It just doesn't make any sense. And why would you film up from behind? Now you have zero communication with your actor. Nothing. You can't turn in, you can't stop in, you can't do anything. Zero control of the route, the speed. You can't adjust anything in process. And the photographer is constantly chasing this actor, trying to get something. In a costume suit, the back is the worst part to make look right. No one films a suit from the rear if he has a choice in the matter, says Bill Muntz, who taught me. Well, my brother-in-law. Why would you only shoot one take? That's what's said. You know you're in a film. You know you fell on the creek, and you not know if the camera worked subsequently. And you've driven six hundred miles from home to shoot a hoax with three men and three horses. Why would you only take one shot? But that's what the person that said he was the man in the suit said. I got out, I put my, that suit on, I walked across the gravel bar. Roger, he shot my picture, I took it out, and I drove home. We did it in one shot. Believe that? If you believe that, I've got this really nice piece of property up here that you might be interested in. Little wet, some tired. So logically, why travel over six hundred miles from home? Spend three weeks waiting to build it? Use the last twenty-four feet on a roll of film? Three and a half miles off the end of the road, next to a noisy creek? And shot the entire suit behind in one take? Anybody got an answer to that? Any one of these seven is enough to create that of a hoax. Putting it all set together is the nail in the box of, box of the hoax itself. It's far as I'm concerned. Bob Marano's published words, and this is a suit that he said he, that he had. I drove down to Rallie's, and we drove about four or five miles up Blood Creek Road. If he'd ever been up Blood Creek Road, at four or five miles, it's about a hundred and forty percent slope on the side. If he walks on that, then I'll take my hat off to him. Nobody walks on that. The suit was made from the hide of a red horse. He may have changed that to fly. It was a two-feet suit, bottom was all fishing waders, and the top was pulled all over my head. I wore football pads to beat the, Roger owed me money, and everyone else made money outside, so I should too. Which one of those is true? Yeah. Pretty common sense. Show me the handle of that. Show me the football pads. See that line down the middle of the back that ends up with the crack of the ball? How would you put a suit on, any shirt on, any garment on, and have that crack shoulder? It wasn't standing. I won't. Put your shirt, it'd tighten for that. Do you think you drove fourteen hours to reach them, then turned back around, drove fourteen hours back home? If you do, remember that topic, I'll talk to you later. This is my favorite comparison shot in the world. Remember we mentioned arm length difference? Look at her arm, this is on, and compare that with the length of Patty's arm. You know why there's a difference? Because there's a difference in their arm length. Okay? There's something called intramembral index. We'll get to that in just a second, I'll give you a P. It's the ratio of arm length to leg length. And it isn't the same with us and with them. Besides, that red suit's got more pulls in it than a fat man's chin.
That's a big, a harder.
Jerry, would you stand up so they can see what I'm talking about? That's my, that's my dinner comparison. Also, this is something you might not have seen before. Look on her chest. She's got breasts. Three, four, three different shots of her with three different angles at different times. But you can see what I mean. See that foot? You guys probably can't see my computer. See that foot? I can see it very well. Those are called osman pads. Man, did they show up. Uh, twenty-fourteen, going down on the go road. Two of them, right from the car. Turned, went over the hill. The lady in the passenger seat, right shotgun, was over at Mainland for this outing. She saw that and she yelled, "Bigfoot!" "Bigfoot!" That was in Malpo 14. We were camping in Malpo 34. In 20 miles, she let her mind, unconvinced that she'd seen Sasquatch. She had seen two Mexican drug dealers wearing long-haired ghillie suits with... with footballs on and a baton. Because it was unstill. Because her mind had never seen Sasquatch. She didn't know what it was. But it knew what a drug dealer was and knew what a ghillie suit was. So her mind and her brain just backed up right up. Before she left school, she got back, understood what happened, and understood where it came from. And that was the same to see all the way. We took that at the distance, Patty's footprints, measured by four member people because of the twinkle. And I have the roll from my room that's hanging on the wall. That's what that yellow robe you see there is. That's Bob giving it down on one hand. And that's Barb's shoe and the one in the green shirt of Patty Patricia. And stretch that out, we've got a mark with Patty's footprints where the hips. And then have people try to walk. No one can walk down without their heads down. But when you watch her, her head doesn't do that. Smooth and even on her feet move in that compliant cape. So her head doesn't go up and down. It goes smooth while her feet are moving. In the intramemoral index, the ratio of your arm length to your leg length. In humans, that ratio is 72. I don't care if it's a midget or Andre the Giant. I've measured them all. It's 72. Close to mine, 72. That's the center of the curve. Bell curve. And there's variations on that. But that's the center of the curve. Chimpanzees at 105. Their arms are just a bit longer than their legs. Gorillas, 122. And Sasquatch is 84. Now, this principle is taught in all schools, all, what do you call it? Anatomy schools, okay? And that's in 101. Now, I'm gonna move over here because I want to show you something. Okay. Draw your attention over here to this chart in the corner. And if I need to move it, let me know. All right. Here's Patty. I want to see how it works. Here's Patty. There's her arm length from there, from the point of her shoulder to her wrist. Okay? That's 1.625. Here's her leg length from her hip, from her hip to her ankle. That's 1.9375. Here's a male. His arm length from the point of shoulder to wrist, Leg length, 2.000. Divide 1.625 by 1.9375, and it comes out .84 times 100. Eighty-four is her IMI. Take heels. You divide 1.4375 by 2, comes out 71.75 times 100, gives you 71.75. Four rounds off to 72. And 72 is the IMI of humans. Does that make sense to you?
Sure.
Okay. Now we have no question that that's a human, that's Sasquatch. What else does it prove for you? It proves scientifically, reproducible scientific proof that that is not a human.
Why you tell that from here?
Which means we can apply whatever name we want. And we did. Sasquatch, big foot. Couple three. Small feet. Right? So if somebody says there's no reproducible scientific proof, tell them to go back and study some more. Because there most certainly is. Here on the up. Okay? Now, you can see how I did it here. This is, if you know the 4th of July footage, that's this one that I did. See, the arm is bent, and the leg is bent both. But it still comes out the same. Another point. In order to change my IMI to 84, I'd have to add four inches to my arm. Now, how could I do that? I couldn't do it with an arm extender because then my lower arm would be way out of balance. The only way to do it would be to take that four inches and put two inches over here and two inches over here. And I'm not quite ready to allow that. Okay? Makes sense? Well, good. And there's Patty. That's the one we discovered. There. You have your critical, valuable, reproducible scientific proof that Patty is not a human. For the being we call the footer Sasquatch. Simultaneously, by virtue that she has been Sasquatch in this film, and not a human in a suit, proves the existence of Sasquatch as it be. Okay? Beautiful. Bob on the left, Roger on the right, looking at some of the caps in her footprints. Many years ago, somewhere between 67 and 72 when running past. Don't barge yourself in. And then an argument. Don't raise your voice. Strengthen your argument. The minute the voices go up, reason goes out the window. There's no winning, no winning in losing an argument after the voices go up. If you can't present your argument in a logical, pleasant manner, you have no chance to win, Mr. Prinzen. If something misses a pure right to you, just let it be. Put it in the back of your mind. I'll give you a good example of that. In 2010, I was at the Oregon Sasquatch Symposium down in Eugene, Oregon. Shelly Shepherd-Wolpert made a statement in her presentation about, I haven't seen a Sasquatch walking across the field, which couldn't see Sasquatch, just the footprints appear. And I probably had 12, 15 people at the next break. Is that true? Has that happened? Can that happen? I said, it's never happened to me. That's a salient experience. You know? And I know salient to be a non-person. But it's never happened to me. And all I can say is, it could be true. That winter, Dr. Igor Berzep is over from Russia. And he and I spent a couple, three days working together. And we met a young man outside of, down in Oregon, a little town west of Portland there. And went out to his area. And I was on deadline, way writing, having a real life. So I said, you guys go dig a hike and then sit here in the car and write. And I put 20 aisles, stacked them up in a pyramid on the rock right there. Got back in the car, grabbed a book, started writing, fell sound asleep, woke up, looked, there were five hours left. And it was a little swale. It was February, so it was wet, no leaves. And I'm watching two sets of tracks side by side appearing out mud. I can't see anything making... I'm sure that I didn't say that was impossible. 21 Days to Destiny has all the things we talked about today. Are there any questions of any type for anyone? Then it's exactly four o'clock. Thank you very much.